Members and officers, welcome to this executive. And we're not planning any fire drills, so if the fire alarm does for any reason ring, can I ask everyone to take the nearest fire exit? And remember that the assembly point is outside Waitrose, where we'll take names, and you can then be safely ticked off and go home. Right, so if I move to this evening's agenda, and that starts with the minutes of the last meeting which was held on the 7th of February 2017. They've been laid on the table for half an hour before this meeting. Can I take those as agreed and I'll sign them at the end of this meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving on to apologies for absence, Mr Taylor?
Thank you, Leader. We've received apologies from councillor Adams, councillor Dinas and councillor Hall.
Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest, colleagues? No declarations of interest. Moving on to item four, which is questions from members of the public. I believe we've not received any questions.
That's right, Leader.
Thank you very much. Moves us to item five, the forward programme, which colleagues you'll find on pages nine to 12. So colleagues, you've had an opportunity to review this. Are there any comments, any alterations or updates you would like made to the forward programme? No? Can I take that as agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item six is the Budget Management Report. So the Budget Management Report I will cover briefly, and if we've got any detailed questions, I may look to Mr Clark to answer, as councillor Hall is unfortunately away this evening. So the Budget Management Report, which can be found pages 13 to 24, is an update on the council's performance against budget. On the general fund, we see that there is some variability on income, which the report covers in detail. However, overall, the forecast outturn for the year is expected to break even on budget. On the housing revenue, the HRA account, there are some adjustments to the maintenance programmes; otherwise, there's actually nothing significant on this to report. The housing capital programmes are forecasting underspends, which reflect the scaling back of programmes in line with the revised housing business plan for future reduction in various capital resources. The report before you, with the recommendations that can be found on page three, has 10 recommendations in all, covering both vehement and rescheduling. Colleagues, any comments or are these agreed? Councillor Bolton and then councillor Edwards?
Thank you. It's probably a question directed to Mr Clark. Can I just clarify, page 14, the current position column at 31st of January 17 shows a wonderful surplus or unexpected surplus of parking income of £305,000. Is that the anticipated position at the end of the year or as at the 31st of January 2017?
Thank you, Mr Clark.
Leader, that is a projected outturn position at the end of the year, and that's been reflected in the 1718 estimates as well, because we think that position will continue.
Thank you. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. I'd just like to make a comment about recommendation nine and recommendation eight, sorry, recommendation 10. Nine and 10. With regard to Wayhill, I'm glad to see that that is again being rescheduled for the coming year, and hopefully we can get on and do some work there. And with regard to 10, this has been outstanding for a number of years now. At my councillor surgery, I have a lady keeps coming in and saying, when am I going to get rid of these drafty windows? And I'm pleased to see that we are going to get on with this and hopefully get it done this year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. I know that you've got concerns about this particular item under recommendation 10. It has unfortunately taken a long time. I understand also it's in a conservation area, in a very sensitive part of Hazelmeir. But I understand that we've now got the appropriate contractors who we feel will deliver and do a good job for the council, and so we look forward to moving that on, and hopefully your resident will be happy and pleased with the forthcoming outcome. So if there's no one else with any comments, can I move to the 10 recommendations on page three, recommendations one to 10, under that item? Are they approved?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. Can we move to the next item, which is the housing service water charge consultation feedback? Councillor Mrs King, would you be happy to introduce that and just talk us through that? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leader. I'll try not to be too long, but it's a very complex subject. Colleagues probably remember that council received a report on the 27th of September last year highlighting the High Court ruling, which found that the London Borough of Southwark had overcharged some of its tenants for the water and sewage collection service on behalf of Thames Water at unmeted properties. Waverley, along with many other districts and boroughs, has a longstanding contractual agreement with Thames Water for billing procedures for tenants with unmeted water supply. External legal advice confirmed that Waverley's arrangements with Thames Water is virtually identical to the Southwark model. The relevant period covers the last six years back to the 3rd of March 2010, and the potential value of claims is in the region of £400,000, which has been a set aside in the HRA. This is based on commission received above the £5 administration charge per year allowed for under the Water Resale Order 2006. To stop any ongoing liability relating to commission, it is agreed to bury the agreement with Thames Water with effect from the 1st of April 2017, which will have no impact on tenants. Under the Housing Act 1985, we're required to consult with our secure tenants if any changes are made in the way their home is managed. The 2,577 tenants involved have already been notified of the case, our potential liability and possible refund. Consultation ran for six weeks to the 31st of January 2017, and tenants were asked online, by email, in writing or in person at the tenants' panel open meeting in January for their views on the proposal to terminate the current contract. Overall, the response was very low, at four emails, two letters, 35 phone calls out of a total of 2,577. And typically such a low response rate shows there is very little concern about the proposal. However, 17 tenants did express a wish for no change. 30 tenants attended the open meeting and were supportive of the proposal presented by the head of housing operations, and were able at the same time to question a Thames Water representative about the different tariffs and methods of payment which would become available to them. Thames Water are setting up a dedicated project team building on their previous experience of transferring seven other organisations over to direct billing to help tenants set up payment plans and make sure they're on the right tariff for their individual circumstances. It's very important to the Waverley housing team that every assistance is offered to its tenants to ensure a smooth and worry-free changeover, and the team will be working in partnership with Thames Water right through the handover. A letter will be posted to all affected tenants, letting them know the result of the consultation and what we propose to do, giving them early information about the process. A further letter, probably jointly with Thames Water, will be sent out in September, introducing Thames Water and giving contact details confirming the handover date and giving details of payment and tariff options. The updated timetable for the process is shown on pages 28 to 29. Six months' notice is required to terminate the arrangement between Thames Water and Waverley on the 30th of September 2017, and I trust colleagues are able to agree to the strategy. This project has required a considerable amount of complex work, and I would personally like to thank officers from legal, finance and housing for their time and attention to detail in particular in managing the project to date. Thank you.
Councillor King, thank you very much. I think that summarises the situation and the proposed action plan extremely well. Did I see councillor Edwards indicating you'd like to speak?
Thank you, Leader. I'd just like to say, well done to all concerned, the portfolio holder and all the officers who worked very hard on a very difficult issue here, and hopefully there is no criticism coming our way, because we couldn't have done anything any better. And I'd like to thank all concerned and our job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. I think we, as an executive leadership team, certainly echo those words. It was most unfortunate that we, along with a number of other local authorities, found ourselves in this position. I think, correct me, was it close to 100 other local authorities involved, somewhere in that region?
17.
Yeah, so again, a number of local authorities, and again, ultimately actually trying to do what was felt was best at the time for the tenants. I think it's really encouraging. We've recognised the issue, we've responded in a very timely fashion, and we're being utterly transparent with our residents and really trying to move this process forward. So my thanks as well to all involved, councillors, the portfolio holder, the head of service and all the various officers. And indeed, I understand that we had some very good and constructive engagement from, I think, the tenants' panel as well, who've helped along the way. So I think thank you to all involved, some real collaborative working, and, you know, again, we're seeing some really good results from that, and that's the important thing here. So there are three recommendations under that item, which is shown on page, those are on page four of your agenda. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Moving to item eight, which is the amendments to Waverley's off-street parking order, the consultation feedback. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. Yes, officers identified that there were several amendments needed within the parking order. This was in order to remove reference to superseded legislation and to clarify the requirements to avoid ambiguity over interpretation when dealing with appeals, et cetera. This review is solely related to rules of usage in the car parks. Having undertaken a period of six weeks of consultation, one objection was received which related to the removal of the leisure centres from the parking order. This has been responded to. We explained that the leisure centre car parks are actually leased to and controlled by the centre operators, and therefore it is not appropriate for Waverley to specify these in the order. There were no other objections, and it is recommended to the council that the proposed amendments to the parking order, as set out in annex one, be approved and approval given to publish the required notice of intention. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards, thank you for that good summary on that particular item. Colleagues, any comments? No? Okay. In that case, we'll move to the recommendations. So there's one recommendation under item eight. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We move next to item nine, which is the first of two conservation area appraisals, and this is for the overall Dunstable Conservation Area. And the appraisal is the 14th of 43 in Waverley's Conservation Area appraisal programme. And this actually started in the middle of 2016, and the appraisal's been carried out. And it basically, in summary, proposes that there are some extensions in terms of the War Memorial and common land between Oak Tree Lane and Mill Lane, the Garden of Long House, Wyn Hall, the Garden of the White House and the Garden of Yon de Lee. The adjustment is that there's a more definable boundary to the north end of the conservation area. There are some removals in terms of the southern end of Nugent's Close, the gardens of one to four Binham's Lee, and a small piece of land not in the ownership of the White House. The management plan, which you will see on pages 64 to 66, and again, under your recommendations, are shown, and there are three recommendations for that item. Colleagues, any comments at all? No? In that case, we are agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 10, and that's the Dunstable Church Conservation Area appraisal. And again, the conservation area lies a third of the mile to the west of the actual village, and it's a very compact area. This particular recommendation is that we bring the boundary up to date, and it will include the whole of the St Mary's Church cemetery, and it will realign the actual boundary with the physical features of Church Close Farm. And finally, it will remove a corner of the field to the south of the new rectory. Colleagues, you will note that there are recommendations shown on page five under that item, and again, any comments or are those agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed? Thank you. So to move to the next item on the agenda, which is item 11, and that's complaints handling in Waverley. And just to really summarise this, the report itself sets out the council's performance on complaints handling, 2015-16. There was slight decrease in the number of complaints that were received compared with the previous year, and there was an improvement in the time taken to actually respond to complaints. However, I think it's really important to stress that we're continually monitoring this, we are looking to make sure that we improve this service at all times for our residents. We've all said that we want to make sure, one of the real drivers for this leadership team is that we provide exemplary customer service, and one of the ways that we can learn from that and really make sure that we focus and improve that is through making sure that we always take on board learnings from this particular process. We've also addressed it in terms of some new software that's being introduced to this area of the service as well. So we're making sure we really build on this performance, we're making sure that all our staff are well trained and are aware of the complaints process, and that they're handled, as I say, in a very efficient and customer-focused way. There's one recommendation under this item, but colleagues, before I move to that, are there any comments you'd like to raise? Councillor King?
Thank you very much, Leader. Page 124, paragraph 14. I'm afraid I cannot agree with whoever from the ONS committee, who were speculating that tenants might be reluctant to complain to their landlord. I'd like to ensure them that our tenants are very free and do so complain, often, and far too often in my opinion, or the number's going down. The other thing that I find slightly disappointing about this is that this is the report to the 31st of March 2016. We're nearly at the end of March 2017. It seems to take an incredibly long time to get this data to us. Thank you.
Yeah, I think there are two points. First of all, I think it's important that we do reassure the public and any of those watching that our tenants do and can feel absolutely free to make any complaints and echo any concerns that they have. My understanding of some of the time scales involved here is that, as I mentioned earlier, we're moving now to a new, much more robust IT support system for this area, because it was recognised that unfortunately the former IT system really wasn't working in a particularly satisfactory manner in terms of the reports and the time scales involved. So we will see change, and we will, ongoing now that now that new system has been introduced, and it was introduced in the last couple of months, we will see the figures and the data coming through much more quickly. But unfortunately, that doesn't help us, because obviously this particular one is retrospective. But can I just assure executive colleagues that we are very aware of that? Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Leader. Going to page 124, paragraph 14 again, you know, I note it says here, the chairman shared a personal concern that there might be a risk of complaints procedure being perceived by staff as a form of safety net for poor service, as customers had a means through which they could complain. I mean, I don't, he's had a personal concern. What evidence was produced at that meeting to substantiate this thought? He then goes on, he was disappointed that the approach was to require a complaint to be made before an issue could be resolved. Well, I don't believe that. I think, you know, lots of things are resolved before they become complaints, and I'd like to see what evidence there was of this. I mean, I don't understand where he's coming from on it. I mean, I don't know whether...
Councillor Edwards, it's a very difficult, sensitive matter involving a resident, so obviously it's very difficult for me to answer that in open. What I would say to you is that the chairman of the overview and scrutiny committee has a number of concerns, and he has shared those with both myself and with the senior directors. And so we are aware of those. As I say, I don't really at this stage want to go into more detail, because I don't feel it would be appropriate within the public domain. But, you know, I would like to make sure that we do reassure the public that the directors are trying to work along with Mr Taylor, with him, to try and address the concerns that he's raising. Okay? Thank you very much. Mr Wenham, you'd like to speak on that item?
Leader, as a general principle, let me assure members and the public at large that officers try and resolve things at the first opportunity. And, you know, that might take a number of cases, depending on the complexity of situation. But the last thing officers want is to refer matters to the complaints procedure, because that is not a way to solve an issue. But sometimes, difficult issues inevitably go through the complaints procedure, and the complaints procedure we adopt and work to is one using the local government's ombudsman-recognised practice. So reiterate, let me assure you, officers trying to resolve issues at the lowest level possible, and, you know, complaint system is not where they want to go. Thank you, Chair, Leader.
Councillor King?
Thank you for letting me come back on that. I think my observation, and Mr Wenham's probably just sort of said it, shows the system works when you look at how few complaints actually ever get up to level three, and even how fewer ever even get to the ombudsman. So the system works somewhere.
Absolutely, and as I say, we also recognise that we can continue to do more to make sure that it's even more robust. So there is one recommendation under that item. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item 12 is complaints about Waverley services received by the local government ombudsman and the housing ombudsman during 2015-16. Now, this report summarises the complaints that are made to the local government and housing ombudsman services, and the local government ombudsman received 26 complaints during 2015-16. Four of these were upheld by the ombudsman and were successfully remedied. The housing ombudsman has made inquiries about three complaints during the same period, 2015-16, but has yet has made no determination on the cases that are being investigated. So, as I say, the report itself is relatively self-explanatory. Any questions? There's one recommendation on page six. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to executive director's actions, Mr Wenham?
Thank you, Leader. Two items this month, as it says under item 13, urgent tree works, important safety works totaling sum of £20,000, and urgent works to the scout and guide hut up Holloway Hill, totaling £8,000, Leader.
Thank you very much. On the following item, we will go into exempt, should anyone wish to discuss that. So I think we'll, just for safety's sake, we'll go into exempt anyway. So are we agreed, executive, that we will go into exempt?
Agreed.
... of the Local Government Act 1972, that the press and public be excluded from the meeting during consideration of the following item on the grounds that it is likely, in view of the nature of the business to be transacted or the nature of the proceedings, that if members of the public were present during these items, there would be disclosure to them of exempt information, brackets as defined by section 1001 of the Act, closed brackets, of the description specified at the meeting in revised Part One of Schedule 12a to the Local Government Act 1972. ... to be heard in exempt. So on that note, I will close the meeting. That's the quickest meeting in the year.